Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order. I would like to welcome all of you to our meeting this evening. And we'll do a roll call by our city clerk, Marcy Killian.
The record will reflect that all members are present.
We're going to have our pledge of allegiance and our invocation by Sister Madeline Fitzgerald of Saint Francis of St. C. Catholic Church.
And if when you do the pledge, if you remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Just close our eyes and pause for a moment and put ourselves in the presence of God. Almighty God, I thank you for your presence among us. I thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here this evening. I especially thank you, Almighty God, for your abundant blessings you shower upon each one of us each day, for the gift of life, health, sustenance, friendship, hope, and compassion. I ask a blessing upon our mayor, Judy Ritter, for the various levels of city officials, staff, and in particular, for this assembly. I'm asking that you, Almighty God, would graciously grant them wisdom to govern wisely amid the conflicting interests and issues of our time, the ability to work together in harmony even when there's honest disagreement, a true sense of the welfare of the needs of the people in Vista, a good heart for justice and truth and for confidence in their decisions, grant them personal peace in their lives and joy in the work entrusted to them. I pray for the meeting this evening, that you, Almighty God, will guide them. Please assure them of your will for them. I also ask a special blessing on all our visitors and others gathered here tonight. Almighty God, may they too sense your guidance in the decisions of this assembly, and may we all work together for your glory and honor. We ask your blessing for all of us as we move forward with hope in the future, to strive to make Vista a place where you are known, loved, and served. Amen.
Please be seated. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buena Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buena Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. The next thing on our agenda will be have the approval of the agenda by our city manager, Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes to the agenda this evening.
Our city attorney, Gerald Piper, will bring us out of closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. The council met this evening in closed session on items CS1 and CS2 on this evening's agenda. With respect to item CS1, the city council authorized the initiation of litigation in joining with other cities to invalidate the provisions of Senate Bill 7 as they apply to Charter Cities. The vote on that was four aye, one nay, Councilmember Campbell voting nay. With respect to item CS2, no action was taken. There is nothing to be reported.
Thank you. This evening, we have no presentations, which is very unusual, but we don't have anything scheduled. And so the next thing on our agenda will be our consent calendar. And the recommendations on our consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a request to speak card to our clerk secretary. And items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following the adoption of the calendar. So with that, we will go on to our consent calendar. And I have one item pulled, which is C5, which is pulled by the public. So I would look for, if there's nothing else pulled, I'd look for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, I have a mo— Did you want to say something?
Just make the motion.
Okay, so please cash your votes.
Can the city clerk record my no vote on item C4, C6, and C7?
Okay, with the other, the other items, the motion passes unanimously with those no votes recorded. And we have, then we'll go to C5, which is on our calendar. And C5 is the fiscal year 2013 State Homeland Security Program Grant Award. And our speaker is Stephen Crooks. You have three minutes, sir.
Sister, that was a great invocation. Alumni of Quincy University—
Hello. Are you talking to us?
Yes, Mayor. I was looking at your agenda, and is there a timeframe here? Okay, three minutes. I'm a staff sergeant, retired staff sergeant, US Army, National Guard, and California National Guard, and US Army Reserve. I was indicated as a homeland domestic terrorist many years, eight years ago after a deployment. My concern is that this money may be misused in a way that would victimize people like me and others that had no indication or no understanding of what this all is about. The Homeland Security, I'm not quite sure where the funds are gonna go, but I imagine it would be funneled probably through the deputy sheriff's deputy department or somebody else like that. And I just want to give you caution and advisement, and, you know, use it wisely.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your service. We appreciate it.
Mayor, if I may, just let the council and the public know that this money will be used for 800 megahertz and VHF radio systems for the fire department.
Okay, I would look for, I don't have any speakers, so I'd look for a motion.
I'll move, I'll move that we accept C5.
I have a motion and a second. So please cash your votes. That motion passes unanimously. That takes us to our next thing on our agenda, which is our discussion item. And our first discussion item is a discussion of our public outreach methods. And so I think we're going to have a report by our assistant city manager, Ally Zimmerman.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Ally Zimmerman, Assistant City Manager. The item before you is something that we brought back at the request of the council. And management analyst Cheryl Mast will provide a brief update on our current public outreach methods, and we look forward to the discussion.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. At the December 10, 2013 city council meeting, the city council requested a discussion item to explore the need for a new commission that would be responsible for receiving citizens' concerns. To benefit that discussion, staff outlined current past practices employed to connect with community members, as well as some methods members of the public can use to provide feedback or request information from staff. A few specific city communication methods used include information available via the city website, email blasts, social media postings, and distribution of our Vista, the recreation guide, and City News Magazine mailed three times each year to all Vista addresses. In addition, staff interfaces directly with people via phone calls or public meetings, which offer face-to-face opportunities to converse on important topics. Specific previous practices have included focus groups, community meetings, and workshops. As detailed in the staff report, there are many approaches members of the public can use to provide feedback to the city. However, if the city council desires additional outreach measures, staff recommends, one, a citywide satisfaction survey to collect input on city services and future needs. The estimated cost for this type of a survey is $25,000 to $45,000. Two, smaller, location-based mini state-of-the-community forums. Three, an analysis of smartphone applications used to collect public input. Or four, the creation of a public outreach commission. Staff seeks the city council's direction on any of the provided options or any additional methods that the city council may have in mind. This concludes staff's presentation, and we are available to answer questions.
Thank you. We have one speaker. Do you want to hear the speaker? So Stephen Crooks. Welcome again. You have three minutes.
What I heard in the last couple of weeks from people that I've been associating with lately, that there is gonna be kind of an outreach from the city to the community. Now, I have recently been privileged to become part of the homeless community in this town, okay? And I say that sarcastically because it wasn't my intention on being that way, but I am there. Being a telephone man for 30 years, being a soldier for 30 years, worked 15 years before that, I'm used to working, okay? Something come up and I, that did not allow me to work, and immediately, without any warning, boom, on the street. Anyhow, what I did hear from the people that I communicate with is that they're very concerned that their safety will now be buffered. They'll have more safety if their voice is heard a little bit more. There's some standing that there's like 600 people that are out on the street right now that huddle underneath bushes, underneath the culverts, in cars, and things like that. And they're very concerned because the city of Vista is very strict in how people conduct themselves. They have to have private property, they have to watch themselves. And I myself have been approached by many of the sheriff's deputies in a very hostile manner, until they realized, hey, he's not hostile, he's just in need. And then they changed their opinion all of a sudden. I think what would be productive for a communication to be established to, through the churches, through civic centers, through groups like this, or your focus groups and things like this, that will give people a reason or an opportunity to come forward and just voice their concerns. I don't know where that would go. I really don't.
Well, you're right here, giving us your concerns, so that, we appreciate that. So thank you. Thank you, sir. Well, with that, I would, you know, I don't see any buttons right yet. I would like to go and do more mini state of the cities. I like doing that at the Boys and Girls Club. Last year, after we did our state of the city here, I think it's important because the one that we do here at our, at our room here is, there's a charge for that. And so, but we did the one at the Boys and Girls Club that was, you know, no charge to anybody. I'd also like to do one also at, like a Shadow Ridge Country Club over there and see if we could do that room, and at least spread out a little bit in the city and do a couple of them, and have our council members join me and do that, if everybody'd like to do that. That would be one thing. And then I have, I'd like to do follow-through on the smartphone apps. I think that that would be, I think that's our future, and I think that we could, maybe they could come back to us with a proposal on that. And then the other thing I saw on here, that we did a lot of Ask Vista meetings, so I would open it up to anybody that wanted to have an Ask Vista meeting. And there, you know, we had people that, we went into neighborhoods and had people, went into people's homes, and took the sheriff with us and the fire department and our city manager, and just answered questions that neighborhoods had if they wanted to have a neighborhood meeting. And so I would be willing to open up the neighborhood meetings to that again, so. And now I see buttons. So I will go with Councilmember Coles.
Thank you. When this came up, sort of at the last minute at the last meeting, I agreed that, you know, we do need to hear from our community, and we do need to give, get feedback. And I was, I want to thank staff for doing such a thorough job in listing and describing all the ways that we have in place right now to get feedback and to offer input by the community. We have commissions, we have regular meetings. And in addition to that, not listed here, is we do have a number of church groups that provide opportunities for input by some of the people who don't have access to maybe some of the other kinds of attention that they would like to be able to have. I know the Vista Community Clinic, they have staff that spends time in the streets, talking with and working with homeless people and people in need to try to get an idea of what can be done. And then, and we support the Vista Community Clinic to do those things, and we take feedback as needed. And I agree with your suggestions, Mayor Ritter, on having some community forums that we've done in the past, the apps that we can use with new technology. I'm not ready at this point to add a commission or to add staff responsibilities for additional structure, but I'm certainly open to doing what we can within our existing parameters to exist, to get feedback. In addition, I think at our, at our goal-setting workshop, we might even discuss whether or not we want to have some kind of survey of public input that is really comprehensive, not necessarily just the people who may have a gripe about something, but really get a broad-based feedback from our community of how we're performing as a city. There's a cost associated with that, so I think we would need to discuss that in relation to our budget development and our goal-setting, but I would be open to getting that kind of feedback as well.
I like that idea, too, the survey idea. That's a good idea. Councilmember Campbell?
Thank you. When I brought this item up and requested that we discuss ways of getting additional community feedback, you know, a lot of times, folks don't want to come to council meetings in the evening at 5:30 and come before the council and stand down there and talk to us for three minutes about an issue. What I wanted was something very close to what staff came back with, and I appreciate the comprehensive report for us to see what we're currently doing in areas that we could maybe do better in, and actually being proactive and going out and soliciting community feedback. I think there's a couple of things in here that I've spoken with the city manager about in terms of the citywide satisfaction survey, ways to do that that would be far less cost prohibitive, that would solicit just as much input from the community. I think that it's important for us to know how people feel about their fire department, how people feel about the trash collection services that they associate with the city, and all these issues that people associate with the city of Vista. And that creates our sort of brand identity in the community. So I'd like to have that discussion with staff moving forward, ways to be able to solicit that feedback, because more often than not, folks are far more willing to fill out a card than they are to come and speak in person. There's so many people that just won't do that, even though they're very upset about an issue. So I'd really like the satisfaction survey idea. I'd also like to do the, in the community events, the similar to the Ask Vista meetings that were done years ago, to go out in those communities and let the communities know that we're here to listen, we want to know what the concerns are, and maybe, if possible, correct some of the problems if there are problems that come up. The smartphone applications, so many cities are going that direction so that people can just go on the city website on their iPhone, smartphone, tap in their concerns or problems. So one of the other things that I don't see on here that I think that we could do that would not be costly at all, is when the new website is brought online, I know it's in here, talks about over the next six months or so to bring a new website online, what I'd like to do is have online survey, online, to solicit feedback. I've seen other cities that have had that to where you can either type in your concerns or there's a question asked, you know, are you satisfied with this particular service that the city's providing, and solicit feedback that way as well. So I'm really pleased that this issue came back for discussion. I think as a city, it's very important for us to solicit as much community feedback as possible, and this is one of the ways that I think we can be proactive in doing that, so, thank you.
Councilmember Rigby?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I'd like to also say thank you to city staff for doing such a comprehensive report on this issue. We really appreciate your time and energy in doing this. And it really does show how much the city already is doing for outreach to the community in all the different ways that we are available for the city, for constituents, for residents, for concerned area neighbors to visit us, to talk to us. And I think that as elected officials, as city council members, going out into the community, to community groups, to community forums, or hosting, hosting different events, might be incumbent on ourselves to go out into the community and be out there for people to see us and have availability to us, to talk to us. I think that the Ask Vista meetings that I remember we had years ago, and I participated in as a resident, I think those are great ideas. I'm very willing to go out into the community and have town hall forums and meet and greet and things like that. So anything I can do on a formal basis like that, aside from the informal, just going out into the community and making myself available. And I do know, and poor assistant city manager, Ally Zimmerman, has listened to me for the last year touting mobile apps and smartphone applications and the different ways that we can do it, not just for reporting problems in the community, but to highlight the wonderful venues that we have in the city with our parks, our trails, our, the hiking trails, the bike trails that we're talking about, and different things that people can just put on their smartphone and say, okay, hey, let's go hike this trail today, as well as some other applications that we can do. And I've presented different, different formats of mobile apps to the city, to city staff for consideration. And I know that we're trying to, you know, look at some funding to develop the apps and also make those integrated with our website as well. So I'm excited to see how that's gonna go. Hopefully with this year, we'll get, we'll get another app going for that. So there are some things that we can do, where I really am very proud of the city staff and the city and how we are already out in the community and are available to the community. But always, there's more that we can do. So I'm available to that. I am not available, I don't think right now is the right time to put another commission together for a public outreach commission, or, as it was mentioned in here, you know, complaint commission. I don't know that we need a complaint commission. I don't think that we have those many issues in the city where people can't get to us if there is an issue. And I'm not sure, I like the connotation of that verbiage, but I think there are a lot of things that we can do short of a commission, so, thank you for that. And again, thank you for the report.
Thank you. Almir Pofrem Al Gulerah.
No, Deputy Mayor.
Oh, Deputy Mayor. Dang.
It's teasing. Well, first of all, don't want to repeat everything about staff, but you guys did a great job. And, you know, I learned a lot, actually, just reading through this, of what's available to our community members and such. So I think we're doing a really good job that way. Obviously, like anything, we can make improvements, and I think the website could be approved. I think the idea of the, some kind of an app, you know, that reaches out to people would be very useful. And I think that's really, you know, the wave of the future, as we all know. But I also like the idea of going out and meeting with people. I think that, while I was with the mayor last year when we went to the Boys and Girls Club, I thought that was very effective. We had a full house, standing room only, and a lot of people that had no idea what was going on in Vista, you know, honestly, you know? And we do have all these resources that are available to people, but the reality is that some of these people are working-class people, and they don't have the time or the know-how maybe to access some of this information. And sometimes, just going into the neighborhoods and contacting people face-to-face is the best way. And I think if we can do a couple of different free venues for state-of-the-city for the people, rather than just for the business people, in addition to the business people too, but I think that would be very helpful and useful. And through those venues, we would also be able to notify people of all this information that is out there for them, and maybe even a quick presentation of how they can access that information at these state-of-the-city free venues. Commenting on the advisory board or complaint, whatever. I don't think we need to add another commission. We have a ton of commissions out there, and, you know, I think we could revamp some, probably. We've already changed one. And I think that there's plenty of avenues. I think we just need to inform people of how to contact us. And I think we could do that in person through these state-of-the-city outreaches. And, you know, again, how we would advertise that, well, I know there's probably community leaders out there, community organizers that can help us do that. I know Bill De La Fuente was the one that helped organize the one at the Boys and Girls Club, and I know he'll help us do it again. We probably need to do one in the Shadow Ridge area, and, you know, probably a couple other areas we can think of. Thank you again.
So does that give you enough direction? Are we okay with that?
I think so. I'm gonna just summarize briefly. It sounds as if the idea of some type of community survey we can discuss as part of the goal-setting session. As the city's website is redone, we're currently working with a vendor and anticipate having a new website online in the next six months. That website will give us an opportunity to integrate some type of mobile app, so we'll be exploring those options. And it also has the capability, or will have the capability, for the online-type surveys with the one or two questions. So we'll be looking at all of that. We look at ways to establish a couple of mini state-of-the-city events. I believe last year, we actually had one at the library and one at the Boys and Girls Club. So those are two good options, and we can also look at Shadow Ridge or any other facility, perhaps in South Vista, that would like to give us the room for free. That's always helpful. And then, in terms of the Ask Vista meetings, we can explore some type of opportunity for the mayor and other, the rest of the council and city staff to possibly make themselves available for small group events where people are asking for it.
That sounds good. Thank you. Okay, so moving on to our next thing, the next thing on our agenda is a public hearing. It's an amendment to the sewer ordinance and the sewer service charge lifeline rebate Yeah, I'm opening the public hearing. We'll have a report from Robin.
Good evening, Mayor Ritter and members of the city council. This public hearing item is an amendment to the sewer ordinance and the sewer service lifeline rebate program. I'm Robin Putnam, the sewer program director. Mr. Elmer Alex, the senior engineer, is beside me, and he'll make a brief presentation for you on this item.
Good evening, Mayor Ritter and city council members. The current sewer ordinance is for both Vista and Buena, require all food service establishments to install and operate and maintain a gravity grease interceptor to regulate the disposal of fats, oils, and grease, commonly known as FOG. The proposed changes to the ordinance that we would like would allow food service establishments to use hydro-mechanical grease interceptors if the following criteria are met. First one would be locating in an existing commercial space, a gravity grease interceptor is infestable, and the establishment generates minimal fog. Amending the ordinance would give city staff the flexibility to consider hydro-mechanical grease interceptors. Hydro-mechanical grease interceptors are currently allowed by the California Plumbing Code. Many other sewer agencies in the county consider hydro-mechanical grease interceptors if the specific criterias are met. The business impacts of the proposed changes are, well, the gravity grease interceptors are very expensive and large, can range from $10,000 to $15,000 to purchase and install into restaurants and food service establishments. Allowing hydro-mechanical grease interceptors in existing commercial spaces makes it much more affordable between $2,000 and $3,000 for a food service establishment to occupy an existing commercial space. I'll hand it over to Robin to talk about the lifeline rebate program changes.
Excuse me. Several changes are proposed to the lifeline rebate program. The first proposal is to reduce the amount of the rebate from 30% to 25%. This is in an effort to come more into line with what other agencies do. The SDG&E rebate— The SDG&E rebate that they offer called CARE is a 20% reduction in the amount of utility bills, and none of the other sewer agencies along the 78th corridor offer any rebate for sewer service charges at all. The second thing would be change the eligibility standard from low to the very low level. As the median income creeps up, the low level looked like it was becoming around $45,000 a year where we were offering a rebate, and that seemed a little bit high. So we were looking at proposing dropping it to the very low level. And finally, and probably most importantly of all, was cleaning up some of the wording relating to residency requirements and deadlines for filing applications that exist in the current program. That concludes the staff presentation, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have on either the amendments to the sewer ordinance related to fats, oil, and grease, or the lifeline rebate program changes.
Councilmember Coles, followed by Councilmember Rigby.
I really think that this is an example of what our city is being sensitive to, the needs of business owners and people trying to start up establishments by giving a more cost-effective grease interceptor program. So I'm fully in support of that. As far as the rebate program, we do need to keep the language, the wording relating to residence requirements and deadlines, but this time, I'm not really prepared to change the rebate percentages or the HUD low-income levels on that one, on that part of that program. In fact, I would make a motion that we adopt everything here, including the cleanup language, but retain the percentage of rebate. So, you know, I'm sure others will want to talk, but I would like to put a motion on the floor to close the public hearing and adopt this, with the exception of changing the HUD low-income level qualification and the rebate percentage.
I don't have any speakers on this one, no. I would suck at that, but I have Councilmember Rigby, I have all of you, followed by Deputy Mayor Aguilera, followed by Councilmember Campbell, so...
I do have a question. First, I want to say thank you for the report. And regarding the gravity grease interceptor and the hydro-mechanical interceptor, it says here, the establishment, one of the criteria to me would be to, the establishment generates minimal fog. What's the definition of minimal, and how is that different than what is standard or what's common?
The minimal fog definition is defined as a food service establishment, as defined with the California Retail Code, that does not transform or change the nature of the food.
Okay, so it's not arbitrary?
It's not arbitrary. It's defined by California Retail Food Code.
Okay. Well, I think anything that's going to help our businesses as far as making their life easier and at less expense is a good thing for our businesses because it translates into a good thing for the community. And then my other question is regarding the percentage on the rebate for the sewer rates. My understanding is that there's been a change in the way that we can fund the rebates through the general fund versus the funds that had been available through a different program. Is that correct?
That is very true. About three years ago, we learned that we could no longer fund the rebates from the sewer service charge, and that the rebate had to come from the city's general fund. Although that really is not the reason we were proposing the percentage change, we really were trying to keep and come more into line with SDG&E's rebate program.
Right. Do you have any numbers that you might look at, cost savings to our general fund in reducing from 30% to 25%?
Yes, the number was in the staff report. I think it was $4,000, and I'll get the exact number for you.
4184.
It's in the physical impact section.
Do we know the number of people in the city that take advantage of the rebate currently?
Yes, we do. And Mr. Nielsen, who's the city's Finance Director, has, oh, actually, I think I have the number. There's two different numbers. One of them is within the city of Vista, 444 people take advantage of the program. And within Buena Sanitation District, the portion that is within the city, it's 54.
Okay. And, okay, thank you very much for that information.
Deputy Mayor Aguilera.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I don't really have a problem with any of this, really. I'm especially excited about the idea of giving businesses options. I think that's really important to our businesses, particularly for our downtown. I know that this will help that area because a lot of these businesses are finding out that retrofitting and all that, and if we want to have restaurants, we need to have, you know, some options available for some of these food service establishments to choose. So, I would prefer to support the entire, I guess, recommendation because I think that it makes sense for our taxpayers to save that, even if it is $4,000. I think taxpayers deserve to save that money because we're not funding it the same way, and it is coming from our general fund, and it is our general fund that we are trying to balance. So, really want to support that as a whole.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell?
So, to me, this is really almost two separate items. The first half makes a lot of sense. I'm very much in support of that. It's a logical, common-sense approach to improving the business climate in the city. The second half, I'm very much against. I think that even though the funding mechanism changed several years ago in terms of what money we can use for this program, I think these are the sort of programs that really define us as a city and tell us, tells the community what our values are and who we support and what we support. I think this program, adjusting it from 30% to 25%, really is not a good thing for our community. It's, you know, this is something that seniors that are on fixed incomes utilize, and we already have. This is something else to take into account, I think, for the public to realize, that last year, the council adopted adjusted sewer rates for the upcoming years that will already increase a number that's very high to someone living on fixed income, especially low-income fixed income. So I'm very much opposed to changing the percentage of the rebate. It's a very small dollar amount to the city, but it can be a very large dollar amount to the recipient that's on a fixed income. So, the question I have for Councilmember Coles, who made that motion, is, were you looking to only keep the percentage the same, or are you also looking at some of the eligibility criteria as well?
I don't. I don't want to change any of the benefit we provide to the current ratepayers that are on limited income or fit the criteria. So, there are three bullets there. The first two bullets are not a part of my motion. The third bullet, to clean up the wording, is a part of my motion.
So you would not, that motion that you made, just to clarify, would not change the HUD low-income household income requirements to very low? It would leave it at the current standard of low?
That's correct.
Okay. That's one thing I wanted to clarify, because I don't want to change the eligibility standards as well. So, with that, I would be very much in favor of the motion that's on the floor to clean up the residency requirements, make those clarifications, but not change the eligibility or the rebate percentage amount.
Did you want to say something again? Deputy Mayor Aguilera?
So can we separate these two items?
We already have a motion and a second. I think we have to vote on that first, I mean, I would think.
Well, I can...
Yes, we do. Huh?
Can I make a motion to separate the two items?
Can you make a substitute motion?
Substitute, yeah.
Of course you can.
I would just like to make a substitute motion to separate the two items so that we can clarify on what exactly we're voting on.
Okay, go for it. It's yours.
So I would like to make the motion that we separate the two, separate the, which one is it there, exactly? That's what happens when you do it on the fly. So, I would like to separate out the sewer service charge lifeline rebate program from the...
Grease traps.
The what?
The grease traps.
Yeah, because I just think they're so, these are two separate items altogether, and I think it's confusing, it's confusing to me, it's confusing to the public on what we're voting on.
Okay, they're separated. So, do you want to make a motion? Oh, do we need to vote on that, then?
Yes, you do.
Okay. Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. Now they are separated.
Okay. So, you want me to, I'll make the motion, then, that we adopt the city ordinance to allow for these hydro...
Grease traps.
Grease traps, yes.
I'll second that one.
That would be items number two and three on this evening's agenda.
Okay.
Both the city and the Buena Sanitation District ordinances.
Okay.
Do we have to close the public hearing before we do that?
I made a motion to close it, but we've got to...
Oh, you closed it?
Yes, the public hearing relates to those two items and not to the third item, which is the eligibility item.
Okay, so that would be number one, right? Okay, so, yeah, I can accept that.
Right now, we're just talking about the hydro-mechanical.
Hydro-mechanical.
So, the public hearing is closed according to items one and two.
Correct.
Okay. So, please cast your votes on that. That motion passes unanimously. So then, now we need a motion on the second half, so...
I'd like to make a motion on the second half, which would be, as I said before, to leave the low-income HUD eligibility and the rebate percentage the same, but implement the language changes pertaining to residence requirements and so forth.
I'll second that. Okay, please cast your votes. Okay, that motion passes with one no vote. And the reason I supported that also is because the median income, I mean, 45,150, and very low income is 28,250, and, I mean, it's very hard to live on. That much money is very, very hard to live on this day and age, so... So the next thing, we have oral communications, next on our calendar, and the first, we only have one speaker, actually, would be Terri Wyatt.
Thank you very much. Truth, justice, fairness, equal protection of the laws, integrity, and a high standard of ethics. That's what residents of this community and this county should demand and expect in their district attorney. My name is Terri Wyatt. I am running for district attorney. After 27 years as a deputy district attorney in this county, I retired at the end of September to run for district attorney. I feel there should be a change of leadership in the district attorney's office, but the right leadership. I am a California native. I came to San Diego in 1983 to go to USD law school, and I specifically went to law school to be a deputy district attorney. My father was a California Highway Patrol officer. My mother was a registered nurse at the County of San Bernardino Hospital, so both of my parents were in public service. Public service was in my blood, and becoming deputy district attorney allowed me to put in practice what I learned from both of my parents, to enforce the laws and respect the laws, and to help victims of very serious crimes who've been traumatized heal. And I've been very proud to serve this county as a deputy district attorney for nearly 27 years. And during that time, I tried almost 90 jury trials. Nine of the years that I served in the DA's office, I served in this Vista courthouse up here in the Vista branch. I tried rape cases, murder cases, gang violence cases, very, very serious cases, nearly 60 felony cases, and they were very serious. I personally have put in prison for life 19 prison inmates, and they're all still in the Department of Corrections, serving where they belong. So I've had the ability to try a lot of cases and do serious work, and also, I served in a high level of management in the DA's office. I was a division chief for case issuing, extraditions, and the lifer hearing unit. So I know what this office is about. I know how to achieve justice. I know that seeking and obtaining justice is the principal value that you need from your district attorney. I'm a career prosecutor. I am not a politician, and that's what we need in this office. And having worked in this office for 27 years, I have some ideas of some real positive changes that we could make. I'd like to expand the elder abuse unit. We only have one investigator in this entire county in elder abuse, and I would like to put better resources in our juvenile justice system. I would like to turn kids around when they commit minor crimes at 13 years old, 14 years old, so they don't become hardcore gang members, and they don't become adult criminals that crowd our local jails. And we need to repeal AB 109, the realignment law. That has caused a problem. Check out my website, Terri Wyatt for District Attorney, and thank you very much for allowing me to be here. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes, and good luck. Okay, that brings us to our, any council comments? And so we'll start with Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Mayor. I just would like to say welcome back, everybody. Happy New Year, and I'm glad to see you're all here. And that's it.
Councilmember Coles?
The same welcome back. The same welcome back to everybody. I just hope we all remember right, 2014, now that we're 14 days into the year. And it was exciting this morning to see one of our longstanding projects launched with a groundbreaking at the Sail Point down in Santa Fe, and it was nice that everybody could be there to enjoy this balmy 80-plus degree weather, while other people in the country are shoveling snow, we're enjoying sunshine. Thank you.
Councilmember Campbell?
No comments this evening.
Deputy Mayor Aguilera?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually don't have any comments. Just want to wish everybody a Happy New Year and wish everybody luck and a positive year.
Yeah, I agree. So I have a few little things here. January is Anti-Human Trafficking Awareness Month, and so this Saturday is the annual Human Trafficking Awareness Walk, from 1:00 to 3:00 at the New Community Church on Eucalyptus, so if any of you are interested in that. This morning, we did the Affirmed Housing groundbreaking ceremony for the Sail Point project, and we celebrated the start of the construction, which is actually very exciting. It will be exciting to drive along there and see things starting to go up on that project and our city's efforts to revitalize that neighborhood and remove the blight along South Santa Fe. It's been a long time coming, so that's an exciting project for us. We have a call to artists out for entries for the next Civic Center Gallery exhibit. It's called Vista Visions 2014. This is an all-media exhibition, and it'll run through February 22nd, from February 22nd through April 3rd here at the Civic Center. It'll be out in the lobby out there. The submission deadline is January 24th, which is in another, is that another week? January's going so fast. Another week and a half, maybe. Information is available on our website if you're interested. Moonlight Stage Productions is kicking off their 2014 winter season with Nonsense, which is a fun program. It begins this Thursday and runs through February 9th. Their information is online at moonlightstage.com if you're interested in that. The Humane Society will be in the Wave Water Park parking lot on Saturday, January 25th, from 10:00 to noon, and the Mobile Clinic provides affordable vaccinations and pet licensing, and information is available for that also on our website at cityofvista.com. So if anybody's interested in that. And then, one other thing, Sandeg has actually made 19 offers to property owners for permanent and/or temporary construction easements on our Vista's rail trail, which will be, they'll be under construction in the next year. So it should be done in 2015, which is pretty exciting, so we can ride our bikes all the way from Escondido, and it goes, ours goes from, the new part goes from San Marcos all the way to Melrose, so that will be the next part finished, and then we'll go on to Oceanside through there. But we're next in line, and so that's kind of exciting to be happening. of exciting to be happening, too. So we'll see that being under construction in the next year. So lots happening in Vista. It's very exciting. So, city managers report?
Mayor, is there meeting, a public input on the bike thing coming up?
The bike thing was this week, wasn't it?
Thursday.
There was a bike meeting.
Yeah, on Thursday, we had the Biscuit Master Plan Update meeting. Over 80 people attended in our community room, and a lot of ideas were shared. And so the plan is to bring back the analysis in the spring back to the public in an open forum meeting.
Which is exciting, because there's a lot of people that ride bikes nowadays. I mean, more people getting outdoors, and with 80-degree weather, you know, why not?
In January.
Yeah, in January, yeah. I won't tell you about my kids that are in Michigan that were without power for an entire week. So, city manager report?
I just had one. Let everybody know that on Monday, January 20th, it's Martin Luther King Day, and so city offices, as well as the library, will be closed, but trash service will not be impacted.
Okay. City attorney, anything down there?
Simply to repeat the wishes for a happy and happier New Year.
Happy Year, New Year. I like that. Our city clerk, anything? Nope. Okay. Okay, then I guess for that, our meeting is adjourned at 6:23. So have a good evening, everybody.
What'd you think? I wasn't going to sign?
Hey!